Good morning. It is Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, and I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to public progress to stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will make note that Supervisor Faisal is joining us online today. If there are no changes, I'll take a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Now's the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you'd like to make public comments and you're in the public meeting room, please come forward, or if you're online, please raise your hand. And seeing then, we will close public comment number one. We do have a proclamation here today. We have consideration of a proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'll go ahead and start it. Whereas home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, security, and for most of us, home and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings. Tragically, for many Americans, these blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas every nine seconds, a woman in the United States is assaulted by an intimate partner, and an average of three women are murdered by intimate partners in the United States every day, and a person experiencing strangulation in a relationship is seven times more likely to be murdered by their partner, and according to the American Psychological Association, the presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide by 500%. And whereas according to the Bureau of Justice Statistics Crime Data Brief, intimate partner violence, women accounted for 85% of the victims of intimate partner violence, men for approximately 15%.
And whereas women and men are not the only targets, children, the elderly, family, pets, and responding law enforcement officers are counted among the victims. And whereas according to the National Resource Center on Domestic Violence, approximately 23% of LGBTQ plus men and 50% of LGBTQ plus women experience abuse at the hands of their intimate partners. And whereas domestic violence costs an estimated 8.3 billion annually in medical care, mental health services, and lost productivity on the job. Women, men, and children living with domestic violence suffer higher rates of physical injuries, chronic health problems, depression, PTSD, attempted suicide, substance abuse, behavior problems for children, and homelessness. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge our citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence and supporting those who are working toward its end. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Now I know we have some different organizations here. I would like to give time if anyone would like to come forward and make any comments, and then we'll do a picture. No? Okay. Then what? Just have everybody come on up? Okay. Moving on, we have no agency reports. Consideration of minutes.
I would move approval of minutes as presented.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Consideration of personnel actions?
I would move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Is anyone pulling anything from consent agenda?
No.
No.
Okay, I would take a motion.
I would move approval of consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Let me get through. Looks like we are down to public hearing items. We have consideration of Resolution 2625 to enter into an agreement for termination of easements and grant of replacement easements on Lot 1, Iowa State University's Research Park.
Yes.
And more.
Mouthful, isn't it? Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for having me. Ryan Wemold, Park Superintendent with Story County Conservation. Here this morning does this talk about the termination of existing easements and then granting the replacement easement for properties in the south central part of Ames along University between Story County and Hunziker Construction Services. So this is to terminate existing joint access easements that were granted in February of '24 and replace them with easements with corrected boundaries. The easement grants reciprocal perpetual non-exclusive use between the Story County properties and the Hunziker Construction Services property for public access, which is required to allow both parties to access the property from the roundabout on University. So again, we can just talk through this on the site plan. So the existing outline in black is Hunziker Construction Services. The sliver just to the south that runs east and west is county property. And as you can see, as you cannot see, do you mind if I go up and point?
Sure. Just don't touch the screen.
Well, the roundabout I'm talking about is right in here. University Boulevard is right here. So we're accessing on the shared use path here. And then this is the road that we're going back to the backside of the park and also parking for this development here. So the second page shows that as well. The easement area that we're talking about today is this dotted line right here, which is shared between the two parties. So again, the black is Hunziker Construction Services, top of that.
So the benefit of this to the public is it's a good example of private and public entities working together for the benefit of all. Hunziker Construction Services is going to develop and maintain the utilities and the roadway in there. So I think that's a pretty good deal for us. And then both parties are obviously responsible for maintenance on their properties within the easement area. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
I think you just answered mine. You said Hunziker will develop and maintain.
Correct.
That includes snow removal.
Yep.
That includes patching.
Correct.
That includes everything, even the side that is...
Correct. Yep, everything within that easement area is going to be maintained by them.
Okay. No cost to us for any of this.
Correct.
Supervisor Faisal, did you have any questions?
No, that was my only question. Thank you.
Yeah, they've been a great partner in this.
Great, great. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. If there is anyone online who would like to make comments, if you'd please raise your hand, or if you're in the public meeting room, if you'd please come forward. Anything, Bryce? No? Okay, we will close the public hearing then.
I'm going to approve of Resolution 26-25.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next, we have additional items. Discussion and consideration of allocating additional funds to the Human Services HVAC project for $28,000.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes. We are looking at buying the remainder of the equipment for the Human Services Center HVAC project. We got, it was attached here, the updated cost estimate for that equipment, and it was $20,400 more than we had budgeted. We budgeted based off of the equipment estimate we received last, about a year ago this month. A lot of things affected why the equipment costs more. Some of it's tariff, some of it's just some new code changes by the EPA for refrigerant. I'm asking, because we have a budgeted project for expanding the server room at HSC, and at this time, I don't foresee that project happening this fiscal year, potentially if at all, because it was a project that was started out as, before we started doing cloud storage. And granted, I haven't talked to Colin, our new IT Director, about this specific project yet. I didn't figure, he knew enough, I wasn't gonna jump him with this because it's not a major priority. But my last discussions with Joe, our previous IT Director, he wasn't foreseeing that it would probably be needed if we went with, you know, cloud storage of our data instead of having physical servers that we were going to have to add to that room. So I wanted to present that as an option so that there is money in my operating budget to cover this additional expense, understanding that if that server room project were to resurface, we would have to budget again for it.
Okay. Any questions?
I have none.
I have none, and I just think this is a really, an excellent pivot, Joby.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no additional questions, I would take a motion.
I would move approval of allocating additional funds for Human Resource Center HVAC project for $28,000.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Edens, aye. Thanks, Joby.
Thank you.
Moving on, departmental reports. We've got the Engineers Quarterly Report.
Good morning.
Good morning, Darren.
Start on the maintenance side of things. The late summer dry weather's created some pretty dusty conditions under gravels, but, and the lack of moisture is making them a little difficult to maintain. They get washboarded when it gets really dry. But overall, I think the gravels have held up well during harvest season this year. We're starting to wrap up our summer road maintenance work and starting to prep our equipment for winter maintenance. Onto construction, we have, it says six, but we actually have seven projects going on right now. We kind of expedited the 510th Avenue paving project we have. We're paving a gravel road, extending it north of Ames there a little bit. We're having some difficulty keeping that maintained to get so much traffic, and that actually started this morning. So dodging the rain, but we're starting the paving work on that today.
Is that north of 180th?
It's just north of 190th. Yeah.
Oh, 190th, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Where that curve is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the curve.
Okay.
So that should be done by the end of the week. The other six, E15 Asphalt Overlay, actually completed yesterday. They finished up the asphalt work last Saturday and then the shoulder work yesterday. E41 Asphalt Overlay, that should start late this week or next week sometime, just east of town here. 150th Skunk River Bridge, that is ongoing. They've started bringing in the beams, so we're out of the river anyway. We've got all the substructure built. So the rest should go a lot quicker from here on out. Hopefully, we get that deck poured before it gets too cold. The Maxwell Bridge, the bridge itself is completed. That's good news because that's the bridge that's probably impacting the most traffic of the three we have going on right now. Just have some road work, dirt work left. Hopefully be done by the end of this week and get that back open. The Milford 24 Bridge has been the slowest bridge of, but it's not impacting much traffic thankfully. I think they're just about done with the substructure too, and they're forming up the deck work on that one. And then the Stagecoach Box Culvert, that was completed a couple months ago. So that completes all the construction for this year. Design for construction, we're working on 220th Street and Nevada Bridge. It's our federally funded bridges for next year. That's let next month through the DOT with construction in '26. And then we're doing design work on the Howard 11 Bridge, and that's the bridge we're hoping to get a federal grant for. We've applied for on a statewide grant. And if successful, we have a project tied to some Warren County bridges. What we call "bridge bundling" is how we're promoting our application to the feds, and we're pretty sure that will get approved. The Federal Transportation Bill projects, again, the same, same bridge I just talked about. That's the CHBP is what it's called, and we're anticipating getting that grant. And that will be, our estimate for that bridge is around $700,000. And HZIP is a grant we applied for, and we did receive $50,000 for some portable traffic lights that we do not have. But we did get those delivered in July, so we have those on site, and we do share those with Boone County. DOT construction projects, the Highway 210 Bridge continues over I-35. I did talk to somebody at the DOT just yesterday. They called because they're, they're expediting the project from Huxley North, the next phase. It was, I think, three or four years out, and now it's gonna be, they're gonna expedite that and get it going here in the next couple of years. So that would be another bridge over 290th. It's a gravel road bridge for us, so it won't impact too much traffic. But that is getting expedited. The 210 Bridge, he said, should be opened back up sometime in December is the goal right now. A new issue I want to bring up to the board and make you just aware of it at this point. We're working on it with a bunch of entities. The new interchange out at 580th, we thought would solve a lot of the church traffic issues that were coming off Sand Hill Trail. Talking with the church, their membership has exploded. It's up 50% in two years. So the traffic out there is incredible on Sundays. I think they get 800 cars for each service, and they're all coming at the same time. So there's really three issues out there right now. Coming off Highway 30, going eastbound, they line up all the way on the ramp and they're backing up onto Highway 30. That is a DOT issue, so we're working with them to make the DOT aware of it. They think it's an improvement over what it used to be, but still, it's still backing up on Highway 30. So the church is requesting a stoplight at the end of the ramp, which is still a DOT issue. How I was made aware of this, recently the sheriff reached out and they have had to send somebody out there because after they make the turn on 580th and go northbound, the turn area gets congested going back to the church on Touring Avenue or Touring Street. So they've had to do some traffic control out there in person, and they, they don't want to have to do that every week. So they're looking for help. So we have what we call MDST. It's Multidisciplinary Safety Team. We meet once a month. That's Ames, DOT, law enforcement, and Story County. We talk about issues like this. And we talked about it at the last meeting, trying to come up with ideas. Right now, I've reached out to the church to try to stagger their, change their service times a little bit. They've already done it once, and I think the way they changed it actually made it worse because people are coming out at the same time as the traffic's coming in, and it's just causing a bottleneck at that intersection. So we're looking at all the options. Really, we're just brainstorming in the next month's MDST meeting. We're going to talk about it again. There is a possibility of a stoplight on the county portion turning on Touring. And we don't have any stoplights in Story County except the one we share at Grant with the City of Ames, and that's just a temporary, but permanent ones cost $200,000, $300,000. So it'd be a major expense to us if we do need to add a light in there. But I do plan, and it looks like I probably will change the speed limit over the bridge to 45 just to kind of slow that through traffic down during the congested time. Because Ames is already, they have, just north of that area, they've already reduced the speed on 580th to 45, so I just have to extend it a little bit over the bridge. So that's something we probably will do for safety, but that will not solve any of the congestion issues unfortunately. So just a heads up right now, we're working on it, and I'll give you updates after our next meeting. See what we're looking at for solutions.
Are there any federal funds available for stoplights?
That's a possibility. Most federal funds work off of accidents, and fortunately, there have not been a lot of accidents. And they have to be severe accidents to get the safety funds for that type of thing. So right now, it won't come close to qualifying, but that's something we can look into in the future. I looked for 25, there was only really one accident so far in that area, so that's the good news. And it was a fairly minor rear end situation. But yeah, so far, there hasn't been any major accidents. It's just congestion.
Okay, thank you.
Plow truck orders. We finally received that truck. We've been waiting on for over three years, so we have that before winter, and that's nice. And we could see one or two other ones before winter that we've already ordered. The board recently approved the purchase of two more trucks that should be delivered in FY '27, and that should get us back up to speed on our truck purchases that we've really seen some delays on over the past few years. Main shop expansion, we have that project in the CIP for FY '26, so we're working with our architect and getting close to getting some finalizing of the plans. That's mainly to address our meeting and lunchroom. We don't really have one now. And then we're looking for an actual heated truck wash bay. The next air wind turbine repower project. They repowered South Azirin a couple years ago, I think it was, and now they're going to do North Azirin. So there's 26 in Story County and then more up into Hardin County. Most of these will just be rebuilt, the engine and the blades, but there are a handful. They said that they're going to replace the entire thing, the base, concrete and all, with some bigger turbines than we're seeing out there right now. So don't have a firm schedule, but they're working through P and D on this. And the last we got was maybe spring, summer timeframe to start on those. So we'll have some road agreements and stuff we'll have to put into place, but we've got some we've used in the past.
Darren, the last I heard, they had a company over at Cedar Rapids, somewhere in Lynn County, that's recycling the blades.
Sure.
Is that your understanding?
I've seen some. I don't know where these are going. They didn't really address that yet.
I'd be interested. I assume we won't have what we had the last time.
Yeah, crushing and...
Yeah, if you have any information on that, I'd like to know.
Yep.
Thanks.
Level C roadway, the board approved making 730th Avenue a level C heading into Jasper County. We did some minor work on the road and replaced the culvert, and we did get the gates installed last week and the signage up, so it's good to go. That should really help with some of the maintenance issues we've had and keep the traffic out of there that doesn't need to be in there. Lastly, we have a new employee hired. Should be starting next Monday. Cody Harrelson is his name. And that would make us fully staffed again. We did get 37 applicants for truck drivers. That's good news because with the new CDL laws, we were having some difficulty finding CDL drivers. Other counties still are, but fortunately, we're getting a lot of DOT applicants. So we're in good shape there.
Great, great. Supervisor Faisal, any questions?
Um, just back to the 580th interchange, kind of piggybacking on Supervisor Merkin's question about federal funds. Is there any way of partnering with the Iowa DOT on traffic lights?
I will check with them at the next meeting. They did indicate the last meeting that they really had no responsibility for the touring intersection. They would for the ramp, so, but I will definitely check on that.
Great.
Check all options because, yeah, we don't have an extra $300,000 in order.
Right, and it's really how they designed that and what they did, you know, there that created the problem.
True, but I don't, with that much traffic at once, there isn't a lot of good solutions that could have been done any better.
Yeah.
Unless they had the lights planned originally, but it's just for 15 minutes, once or twice a week. That's the bad thing. So and you, there was talk, you know, having volunteers from the church come out and deck traffic and out on the high-speed highway. There's just too much liability, and even setting up signs for us, we can't really have that.
Right.
Temporary rollout stop signs are really only for low-speed school situations.
There's just no other way out of there. It's all private land. There's not a lane even that could be.
The church has talked, and all the options is possibly looking for another way out north. They've got the gravel road north is the back road that heads up to Lincoln Way.
Oh.
Half of that's owned by Ames now or annexed into Ames, so it'd be, the intersection at Lincoln Way is an Ames situation. So if the light was needed there, but they're looking at maybe other options, building a whole new road even to get traffic out.
You know, having a second way out of there would not be a bad thing, particularly if there was some kind of emergency.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Get, and to get emergency vehicles in.
Yeah. It's there now, the gravel road, but it just, they just not, people don't want to drive on gravel.
So it is open.
Oh, yeah. The church built a huge culvert, a triple box culvert, and a portion of the road on private ground just to match up with our gravel road. So they've invested quite a bit to do that. That's been in place for a number of years. It's just causes, they dust control it too, because it does create a lot of dust. The dust control really helps with that.
I think that would be a better solution because it would also give them some emergency access, egress kind of thing. But then it's the, what's that cost? How's that get done? But I think that'd be worth exploring.
And they'd probably have to work with the City of Ames then to potentially get a light in that other location.
Correct.
Seems like they'd have some interest in getting that done.
Yeah, the, I believe there's a new substation right there, and they've got a road built probably right where they would want it built, but with the substation there, I'm not sure. I don't know if that must be a private lane or road. It's in Ames, but that's probably where they would look to put it. But I haven't seen where that substation actually was built. That's, we're looking at all options.
Sounds like a good conversation for your next MDST meeting.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Next, we have discussion and direction on next steps for tentative EOC expansion. Brody, sorry, Joby and Melissa.
Good morning again.
Good morning. Good morning.
Yeah, so the last time we we met about this project, um, gave direction to seek options and costs for what it would be to make the best use of the space we had in the building downstairs in the basement, which is primarily removing a block wall that is currently in place and putting a door on the hallway. And then doing some in-floor communication jacks and electrical jacks, so that it makes the room more uh versatile and then make better use of the modular type type tables that we currently have down there, so that you could set it up in multiple different ways and still be able to have connectivity. And um, we reached out to the architect firm that we had been working with and they provided us with best cost estimate that they have to date, which is, see in front of you, a hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty seven dollars. The only thing I seen digging through it that I don't see captured is a construction contingency. They had a design contingency in it. But, so if we used a probably a standard twenty percent contingency in there, that puts it around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, potentially total out the door cost. And then we also would need to update the A V system in there, talks with that. We felt it was best to keep that as a separate bid in lieu of putting it in with the construction cost, cause we felt that it would just end up making the A V portion cost more, because it would just be a general contractor that would sub it out and then ultimately mark it up. So we would just do it concurrently at the same time, so that they could work together. But we would hence, given the size of the project, I think it would be best handled in-house bidding it in lieu of, and the architects would help us with that language to put in the construction bidding documents that, to make note that that would be happening, so that they would work with the potential contractor that would do the A V system.
And realistically, you know, looking at the A V system cost is probably going to be easily um a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The system we have currently in place was installed in two thousand and fifteen, it is starting to break down. Um, equipment is expensive to replace, so there would not probably be a significant amount of current equipment that could be used. We, so we would look at being at replacing with a brand new system, as I said, it'd probably be easily a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get something appropriately sized, because it would need to be a bigger system than what we currently have. And then there's also some soft costs that would need to be absorbed um with that and that um that we would look at using the money the commission has set aside to pay for the A V system and the soft costs for outfitting that room, if the board would be willing to uh absorb the construction costs.
Okay, and and basically, it's a rather simple design, it's kind of keeping the inf, the 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 offices the way they are now and even that doorway going out, but it would go out into where the hallway is now, that would become part of the E O C. So that gives you.
The door, um, it gives us about additional three hundred square feet if we take that hallway uh space. Our office configuration is going to stay the same, there's really nothing we can do with that. Um, we would look at the door would go right there by the women's, would go right on the backside of the women's bathroom that's currently down there in that hallway. Um, and then we would be creating um a, guess, we were looking at creating what we would call a third workspace. So if we do have an intern, if we have additional staff come on, they could be, there would be a workspace there for them. Uh, but we would not be changing the configuration inside the current office space, it's going to remain the same, the doorway is gonna remain the same. We're just gonna close that off by the bathroom and then create a, try to create a workspace there.
Mm-hmm, so that would effectively kind of close off that stair tower, but there's two other stair towers for egress on the lower level, so that's not a problem, correct?
Correct, we, and technically, we actually have three.
Cause there's that one door.
Yeah, it goes out under the pan and then the two stair towers are full access that aren't limited.
And we wouldn't close, completely close off that hallway, that door would remain there for, you know, if we had, for emergency egress out of the E O C or if we need to bring staff in after hours, we don't want, necessarily want people coming through the front door if it's after hours and it and it gives a point of security, um, so the door is going to stay there on that hallway tower, so. It would just not be, it just would not be open for public use, yes.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, Linda, it's it's pretty simple in its overall design. We, we tried to reuse like all the cabinets that you show in the drawings I emailed you yesterday, those are all existing that are currently there, we're gonna reuse.
We're gonna reuse.
Had to repurpose as much as we can to cut the construction cost down and then. And essentially, we're putting it back to the way it used to be before we remodeled the building back in the early two thousands.
When it used to be the driver's license station space.
And I don't even remember, I didn't remember that, I didn't know that he said that, but.
One big open room.
Yeah, we built that, we added that block wall that's there.
Oh, okay.
Didn't realize that.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So it, so it'll, the demolition piece to it would be fairly simple, I don't want to say easy, but simpler than if it was an original wall, so.
I like the fact that, you know, the drawings you've sent us, it gives flexibility is how you set it up. I think that can be really useful, because, you know, right now, you just don't have it.
No, right now, we don't, we're tied to the configuration that we have, so.
Yeah.
With putting the, putting the runs in the floor, it makes the room a hundred, a hundred percent configurable. Um, it can be any, anybody can use it for training, we can, we're gonna be able to move the computers off the table. So if somebody is having a, just a general training session, they don't need the computers, we have the ability to move those off the table and we can set it up for um whatever configuration somebody would need.
Supervisor Faisal, do you have any questions?
Uh, I don't, I don't, I I really like the way this is shaping up.
And I know it doesn't get you everything that was kind of in the the vision, the wish list, but I think it's gonna be good that it uh, you know, it gets you more space for the E O C, gets more flexibility, gets a room that everybody can can use better. And I, I think the cost sharing that you're proposing makes a lot of sense, because the county owns the building. So if the county does the construction and the commission does the A V, I hope that we could use it if we do training.
Oh, most definitely, it would be, it would be no different than what the E O C is available for right now. It would just be something that's gonna be a lot more configurable, um, and create a, create an additional training space that people, that anybody could, any county department could use.
I'd just like to also add that I spoke with Lisa Markley before we come in here to see where we're at budget wise as far as capital projects. And her and I both agree that we feel that there is funds still available in capital projects to cover the construction costs. I think she's on to correct me if I'm wrong.
That might be her phone number up there.
Yeah, I think that's her extension, but.
And we would look to do a budget amendment, um, probably in January to bring the funds from our designated reserve into our budget, so. Um, you know, with approval, with the direction from everybody, we'll start, you know, we would start the R F P process and go from there.
And this is. How long do you think the project will take?
I would say probably, cause I know that there's outfits looking for work, um, so I think that it, six months, it should be. Start to finish, like I said, a lot of it, there isn't a lot of major construction work, there's some demolition work and then cutting up some concrete and re-pouring it, so.
Mm-hmm.
As I said, and I know, because I've been, I've had some, a few companies reach out to me, seeing if we had any projects coming up, because they're looking for stuff for the wintertime, so, and I don't think it would take a whole, you know, realistically, just a couple of weeks to have it ready to be in a, to go out for vetting, based on the the scope. Complexity of the scope is small, so.
Great.
So you might, Melissa, you might need someplace to work when the, some of the construction's going on, could figure something out.
I mean, we'll figure something out, but I think, you know, just for us, it's amazing how much shutting that door. Um, but we'll get it figured out one way or another, we have the capability, if we need to work remotely, we can work remotely and take care of everything that we need to take care of, whether we're in the office, if we find there's days that are gonna be particularly difficult, but.
Okay, this is a direction, so I think everybody's, we're we're all sounding like, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
Do this.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for all the good work on this.
Thank you.
Uh, any upcoming agenda items?
No.
I don't think I have any.
Okay, I don't either. Now is the time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Good morning, Auditor Martin.
Good morning, Board, um, I just wanted to make a public announcement that starting uh tomorrow, October fifteenth, um, absentee voting in person here uh in the administration building will begin for the upcoming city school election. Uh, that will be down in the assessor's conference room, um, and will be available Monday through Friday during our regular business hours, eight AM to four thirty PM. Additionally, uh, was petition for satellite voting, um, which will take place um Friday, uh, October twenty fourth. That will be at sixty forward in Ames. Um, and then on Saturday, November first, uh, we'll be at the Ames Public Library. For both those two days, we'll, uh, voting will be available from nine AM to four PM. Um, uh, and then um, city school election is uh November fourth, twenty twenty five. Uh, you will vote at your assigned polling location, um, and polls will be open for that from seven AM to eight PM, so. Yeah, and I'd like to thank um Wayne Shukrath, the assessor, for the use of his conference room and also Melissa Spencer and Joby Brogdon for rearranging some of their meetings, so I could have that space for the full time, which I reserved after they had, so. So it's always a group project, um, we won't see the uh foot traffic that we saw last November. Um, generally speaking, uh, this is a really hard election to predict. The turnout will be all over the place depending on what's on the ballot for the jurisdictions, but um probably overall, uh, maybe twenty percent countywide, so. Um, election to watch, I'm sure we'll get a lot of interest here in Nevada for both the city and the school election. Um, some other hotspots might be Slater, um, and then Collins and uh, yeah, it just really depends on what's on your ballot, but everybody um is eligible to vote, everybody's in a school district in Story County, so it is a countywide election, so, thanks. That's, that's about it, unless you have any questions about the election, so.
No, thank you.
Well, thank you to you and your team.
Uh, okay, I'm not seeing any other public comments, so we'll close that. We'll move on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements, Supervisor Merkin.
Ah, okay, um, here's my second. We have a recognition this afternoon, uh, tomorrow I have a meeting in the afternoon regarding some housing options. Um, I'm going to be off Thursday and Friday. And then next Monday, looks like, I think I have a M I P A meeting in the afternoon. So got a few meetings, but gonna be off a couple of days doing personal business.
All right, Supervisor Faisal?
Yep, um, I am on K H O I on Thursday morning, I believe, um. And then I will be back uh on Monday, I have a meeting with Josh in Ames. Um, I'm gonna try to make the landlord roundtable um, on Thursday, if I can, so, I'm not sure at this point. That's my.
I, I have one more thing I'd like to mention. Um, Thursday evening at six thirty at Ames Public Library, the city of Ames is gonna have a, a meeting, an open house on what their plans are with the Resource Recovery Center. So that might be something that people might be interested in, I'm gonna have company from out of state, I'm not sure if I'm gonna make it. I'm gonna see if she's gonna be interested in going to a garbage meeting and if so, we'll be there, but I may not make it.
I think there's a lot going on on Thursday.
There is a lot, there's also a league meeting, I noticed.
And the mental health expo.
And the mental health expo.
Thursday. Wow, so, was there anything else, Supervisor Faisal?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, uh, I have a fund dental appointment this afternoon, I'm saying that positively. Uh, we have a recognition, then I have an ARC executive committee meeting, I have a personal appointment in the morning and then I'll be in. And then I have a meeting down in Des Moines and then I have a District Five Disability Access Point, Access Point meeting. Uh, Thursday, I have Aging Resources, Friday, I have a personal appointment and then we'll be in in the afternoon. And um, Monday, I have a um workforce meeting at noon, so, kind of what's going on for me. And if there is nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Head and Zai, we are adjourned, thanks everyone.